We'll roll call. So again, I'm Rob Walter, Board Chair. I'm here. So let's go through our Board members. Barry Schumaker, are you here?
I am here, Rob.
Fantastic. Carolyn Carpenter, are you here?
I am here.
Got you down. Cindy Furtenbaugh, are you on?
I'm on.
Fantastic. Holly Grimsley, are you on? Holly? Do we have, do we lose Holly?
I see her. I see her. Her.
Icon. Avatar.
We need her for a roll call. Come on, Holly, are you?
I thought I saw her.
It says she's on.
David is present.
I see her, but her speaker's not on. I see her little.
We talked to her a little bit earlier. Okay, so at the moment, we don't have Holly connected.
I'm sorry, guys. I am connected. I just got back on.
Fantastic. Okay. So Laura Blackwell, you on?
I'm here.
Okay, and then David Harrison, are you on?
Yes, our president.
Okay, and David, but you're not on the Skype. You're calling in on a phone. Is that correct?
Do we need to make a motion to have, to allow him to vote? If so, I would make that motion.
Brian Shaw, can you weigh in?
Yes, I think. Can you hear me now? This is Brian.
We can.
Yeah, I think a motion to allow him to participate and vote in any board actions. Wave policy to the extent necessary.
I will second Carolyn's motion.
We have a motion by Carolyn, a second by Barry to allow David to participate in our board meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Say no. Okay, that motion passes. David, you're welcome to participate. And before we. I guess before we set the agenda, we've had some calls and what the school system, essentially what's going on with the COVID-19 and what do we know today? Chris Lauter, can you share with us any information that we didn't have earlier this month?
Yeah, so what I can tell you is obviously that's rapidly changing. And what we do know so far is, you know, we obviously are in still in Phase 2 that the Governor left through July the 17th. And on Wednesday of this coming week, July 1st, Governor Cooper will let schools know the phase that they're in, which for schools is either A, B, or C. A means everybody comes to school like normal. C means nobody comes to school and everything is remote. And B is some form of hybrid of that, meaning maybe what they basically said is the maximum of 50% of the kids would be on campus at one time. So we are trying to comply with those and figure out the plans. To be quite honest, they change quite a bit. And we have some concerns about that, especially for Wolf Meadow, which is scheduled to start here, you know, within the next month. And just to give you an example of what I mean by what's changed is so the Governor said yesterday, everybody starts wearing a mask in public starting tomorrow. But then the qualifier was that was, well, if you're 11 or under, you don't have to wear a mask, which would obviously have implications for school. We also have heard in the last week that only eight students would be allowed to ride per bus, which is, you know, almost 10% of what we have on a maximum now. But we were also told this week and it looked like confirmed, no, we're going to let that run with 24 students on a bus. And so, again, within the last 48 hours, we've heard masks, no. So if we follow what we know now, the Governor said, kids don't have to wear a mask, but if they're going to ride a bus, they do have to wear a mask if 24 are going to be on there. So, again, that doesn't mean it's anybody's fault. We're just saying all of that information is floating around. We got to have enough time to get that digested and make a plan. So because of that, we're evaluating all of that. Right now, our big concern is that a lot of districts with year-round schools like Wolf Meadow have, are not going to run those year-round this year because of that, being able to have it up and ready to go in the next three to four weeks. So we're certainly doing everything we can to analyze our plans and Wolf Meadows, but obviously have some concerns with starting up a school still in Phase 2 and the rules changing so quickly every day. So as soon as we know what those plans are, obviously when the Governor releases it Wednesday, then we're going to start, you know, try to release our plans. But you don't want to say, oh, we're going to do X and then have to change it because the plan changed. So right now, what we do know is the maze, the face mask came in and Phase 2 is extended through July 17th. And we know that the Governor will tell us which one of those three phases on Wednesday. As soon as we have that decision, then we'll roll out our plan as soon as possible, if that makes sense. I know it's a little confusing, but it really is an ever-changing situation.
Thank you for the update, Chris. Do we have anything else on the RNC and the calendar that we'll be using? Are we still waiting on that, too? Chris? Did we lose Chris? Anybody else answer that question? Okay, Barry?
Yeah, Chris said something about Wednesday, and I didn't know what he meant. Was it Wednesday week? Or what Wednesday was he referring to where he would get the final guidance?
I think he said Wednesday, July 1st.
Wednesday, July 1st?
This is Brian Shaw. My understanding is that the Governor is supposed to announce by July 1, what the status of schools will be.
Okay, thank you.
That would be, that would be Wednesday.
And then we go from there. That was the last I heard on the RNC. We're still waiting on the City of Concord to let us know if the police, if we could have LEOs in our schools, SROs in our schools. All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to.
I don't know if you guys can hear me. I got kicked off. I'm back on now, so.
Yeah, we had a, the question was regarding the RNC. Are we still waiting on information? Or can we, when are we going to make that announcement on how schools going to look?
It appears like that is much less of an event than it was, but we are still working with law enforcement to find out what their obligations are. So we expect certainly after the week of the 4th to know what that'll look like, and then we'll communicate it as soon as we've confirmed that with law enforcement.
Okay, thank you, Chris. All right, so we're going to move on to setting the agenda or adopting our agenda?
I'll make the motion.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Schumaker, second by Mr. Harrison, to adopt our agenda for tonight. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, that motion passes. So we are going to move on to our action agenda. We have four items tonight. 3.01 is the approval of the final 2019-2020 budget amendments. Ms. Flood, are you on?
I am on. Thank you, Mr. Walter. I'm sorry, I'm just going to try to share my screen for a moment so that you can see the budget amendments. All right. Okay. Can you see my screen?
Oh, we can.
Great. Thank you for having this board meeting for us. The financial impact of this board meeting is great, so we really appreciate it. It does a lot for the district. So we'll start with the state budget amendment. As you can see in front of you, there's some minor adjustments at the top. There's a, there's a adjustment to transportation. That was really just the projection was a little bit high, and so we had to adjust it to the actual. As we go down this screen, you can see that there's funding from the CARES Act. So there's four different types of funding that's included in that CARES Act. The first one is for computers, student computers. The next one is for child nutrition, to help assist child nutrition with the feeding. The third one is for computers for staff. The fourth one is for Wi-Fi or hotspots for students. And the final one is, that was, oh, sorry, just, that was a generic pot of money from CARES that we could, we had various ways that we could spend that. So that is about $3 million or so, I think, if we add that up, in that part of that allocation. The next one is a decrease, and it looks a little bit scary. It's $1.1 million decrease for the business modernization project. That's just simply because DPI allocated our money for a multi-year. Project this year. That was probably not the best. So they took that money back, and they'll give it back to us next year. It's really just the way that they did it. We haven't spent that money and don't need that money until next year. The next one is the normal adjustment, our booking of the budget for a guaranteed allotment by the state. So when we pay annual leave-out or we pay longevity to staff, the state guarantees that, those funds. And so then at the end of the year, we book the budget for that. The next two things are very similar. They're a guaranteed allotment by the state, and after the state pays that, you just book that budget at the end of the year. So because of all of the COVID money that we received from the state or the federal government, whichever applies in the case, to be able to maximize those dollars and get the most dollars into Cabarrus County, I had to do a significant amount of moving this year. And so the next couple of adjustments, well, two of the adjustments are so that we could get the funds into the right pot, so that we could maximize them and pull them into our local dollars. The one allotment right there in the middle, the principal salary, that's just indicative. Principals are paid on a schedule that represents their growth. And we've done very well in Cabarrus, and so therefore, that's another guaranteed allotment that the state provides. And so we are above the average due to our growth, and that reflects here financially.
Kelly, can you back up to that teacher assistant? One, right above the principal. So it was a decrease of $1.1 million from the regular ed TA to the EC.
So yeah, we have a pot that's allocated very specifically for teacher assistants. That's what you can pay in that pot. And so at the beginning of the year, I made an assumption I would be paying a regular ed TA. And by the time I had my, all my moves, I just ended up paying my ECTAs. You know, same pot of money. It's just more of EC-aligned. So because I've shifted some teachers into a different pot of money at the state level, freed up some local, so I freed up some significant amount of EC money at the local level is really what this represents.
Okay, so that was really from the, when I had asked you a question a month or so ago, from the local EC funds?
So, well, this particular, I will make sure I clarify, is Medicaid. So we have some Medicaid money. It's not really local money. It's the reimbursement of Medicaid. So it's in Fund 8. And I sometimes call that local interchangeably.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. I'm going to go down. Okay, so that's all of the state. If there are no more questions, or if there are any questions, I'm happy to address those. Okay, so let's go down to our local budget amendment. Very small, minor change, basically from one longevity code to the other. Just a minor change at the end of the year. Going to continue on federal. Here again, so I mentioned the CARES Act. So some of the CARES Act came through state funding, which you saw just a minute ago, and some of the CARES Act comes through federal funding. And so the top entry here is about $3.4 million that we received for CARES Act. And so those funds are just budgeted. We haven't spent any of those yet. We'll carry those over until July. And then the adjustments at the bottom are just minor shifts, generally to do with indirect costs in our federal programs. And then finally, the bottom one is we received an additional $5,000 to help in that EC area. So we're at Capitol now. So the first entry is the roadwork for Hickory Ridge Elementary. This is, the county's catching up, and we're just cleaning up our books from things that you've already approved. So that was some, releasing some contingency and also asking for some additional funds. The next one is recording the funds for the new middle school that the county has allocated. And then as you continue to go, we have a small allocation for the new high school land in the Northwest area. Most of that has been recorded already. This is just a small addition to that. And then finally, you have the yellow bus debt payment in school and the leases related to when DPI provides those yellow school buses for us in replacement.
Yeah, Kelly, for the, for the land, I thought the county bought that directly.
They do. You're right. But they, it also gets recorded on our books. So it shows up on our books for our financial state.
Okay.
And that's the reason we have to do it here. Yeah. And then finally, this is the local special Fund 8, another small adjustment to benefits from one function to the other. Are there any other questions on budget amendments?
Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Kelly. We do need to act on this. So we'd need a motion and a second to approve the budget amendments for fiscal year 1920. Second by Cindy, second by Barry Schumaker. Any further discussion? Okay, let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Say nay. Okay, hearing no, no negatives, I think that passes 7-0.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to 3.02, which is the Title 1 Plan. Do we have Ms. Reeves or Ms. Legel? Are you on? I guess, Kelly, you can stop sharing your screen.
I'm sorry. I'll do that. Hang on just a second. Well.
Who do we have on that's going to talk about the Title 1 Plan?
Dane, I can't find where I'm supposed to stop sharing. Can you help?
I just tried to take it over. Let me know.
Thank you.
Does Title 1 screen show up now?
Yeah.
Yes. Hi, this is Crystal Hill. Is Sarah or Amy on the line? They should be.
That's what I asked earlier.
Okay, she's just texted me, said she's talking.
Okay.
We can't hear.
Okay, well, I will go ahead and start, and then Sarah can jump in if she hears me. I am on the road, and I may go out as well. So we presented the Title 1 Plan on June 1st at the work session. And since that time, the CCIP was opened up, the plan has been submitted, and we also shared our Title 1 budget. And we did receive a few questions, and tonight we'd asked that you would approve the plan.
Thank you, Crystal. Do we have any further questions on this item? Board members?
Sorry, I had to get back to the micro, to unmute.
Okay, go ahead, Cindy.
So, Crystal, when, the question I asked, one of the questions was, do the numbers in the Title 1 Plan represent only Title 1 schools as far as goals? Or do they represent all schools? And the answer was they represent all schools. So if there's an elementary goal, it's for all Cabarrus County schools. So the numbers seem low to me, since some of the Title 1 schools are actually already above those percentages.
So I think you're referring to.
At the tone, please record your voice message. When you are finished recording, you may hang up or press pound for more options.
Very funny.
I'm not sure what that was.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please continue.
I'm not sure what that was. Okay, so the goals that are there, I believe you're referring, Cindy, to the first question. So the first goal is for reading, elementary reading. And that goal is 65%, and that's for all elementary schools. I believe the answer that I just sent to you was the, our reading for our Title 1 schools is just under 50%. Does that make sense?
Yeah, because I just pulled up the state site again to see, because I thought it was higher than the percentage for the same subject. So, but overall, it just seems like they're low, if you take into account all schools.
Well, our goal for the district for 312 is 70%. So that's just the breakdown of elementary reading being at 65% and math being at 70. I can pull what our district average is for elementary if you just give me a second.
I mean, I have it here. For math, it is 66.7.
What are you referring to, Cindy, so we can see that?
I'm on the DPI site. And the cumulative.
And I apologize. Sarah has all of this, but she is not being connected, so I'm having to pull it up.
Okay. So it said the one goal is by June 2021, we will achieve an average proficiency of 65% in third to fifth grade reading.
That's correct.
Okay. And just, like I said, looking at AT Allen, it is, if I'm reading this right, it is 53.7, but overall, it's 63%. So that's a 2% goal increase. Does that sound right?
Well, yeah, AT Allen is at 53.7 in reading percent. But then we also have other schools that are lower and higher. So each individual school sets their own individual goal. But as an average for elementary reading, our goal is at least 65%. The other piece of data that we're taking in consideration is our iStation data that we used for this current school year. The last piece of information that we had was middle of year. So that's where that 65% is coming from.
Okay, so the, except if I'm reading this right, the overall current reading for the whole district is 63. The goal is 65, so that's a 2% increase is what we're shooting for for the next year.
Yeah, if what you're reading, I'm not, I'm not sure if what, I think that our overall goal was, I mean, our overall proficiency was 60.1 for elementary schools last year.
Okay, yeah, this is 18, 1819.
Yeah, that's what I'm referring to.
On DPI site. Yeah, the DPI site is showing 63 even.
You have reached the maximum time permitted to record. To send your message, press 1 at any time. To listen to your message, press 2. To re-record, press 3. For more options, press 4. To cancel, press star.
More on somebody's voicemail. And the.
To send your message, press 1 at any time. To listen to your message, press 2. To re-record, press 3. For more options, press 4. To cancel, press star.
Somebody pressed star.
You're fine, just to be sure.
Goodbye.
To send your message, press 1 at any time. To listen to your message, press 2. To re-record, press 3. For more options, press 4. To cancel, press star.
Dane, do we know where that's coming from?
No, I was looking to see if we could tell who that's coming from.
Please try again later. Thank you for calling. Goodbye.
Bye.
Hopefully they're gone now.
It's gone now. Sorry for that distraction.
Move to strike that eight minutes from the record. That was a joke. That was a joke.
Yeah, and then on the, the math scores, Crystal, what I'm seeing on the DPI site for 1819 is for the district is 66.7, and the goal would be 70. So that seems like that's a reasonable goal, too. I just didn't understand, like I said, if we were talking Title 1 schools or whole district or what it was.
I apologize. I'm back.
Did you, did you hear Cindy's question?
No.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm driving, and I do not have great internet connection. So I'll be happy to pull what that number is. I believe it's 60.1. Like I said, Sarah had all that information, and she can't connect right now. But I'll be happy to get that to you.
Yeah, that's fine. I can see what's on the DPI site. I just didn't really know if it was, was Title 1 schools as a group, or if it was the whole district, based on how it was worded.
No, Title 1 average is below 50%.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have any other questions at this time on the Title 1 Plan? Board members? Okay, so we are, go ahead.
I'm sorry, this is Amy from Title 1. I'm sorry, I'm chiming in. I just want to let you all know that I'm here. I didn't know if there was any other specific questions.
At the moment, it doesn't sound like it.
Okay.
We've got one last opportunity here. For board members?
No questions.
All right, so we do need to approve this plan. To do that, we'll need a motion and a second.
Move to approve the plans, Title 1.
All right, so we do have a motion by David.
I'll second.
Seconded by Laura to approve the Title 1 Plan. Any further discussion? All right, the vote, in favor of approving the Title 1 Plan, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Say no. Okay, that motion passes 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to 3.03, which is the Career and Technical Education Application for State and Federal Funding for 2021. Mr. Rusty Parker, you on the line here?
I am. Good evening, everyone. I presented the CTE Plan at the work session on June the 1st. And then after that, CCIP opened. Since then, I've been working with the CTE team in my department and also with my DPI regional coordinator to get the plan submitted. Since then, I've had two questions. And then also, I'm just, I'm asking that you approve the plan since it's due on June 30th. So thank you very much.
Okay, and then there's on board docs, there are several documents for us to have reviewed.
There are. That's the full application.
Okay, board members, questions on the CTE Plan here and application?
Move for approval.
Yeah. Hold on, my house phone's ringing, but I do have a question.
Yeah, we have a question.
Sorry. I'm just going to mute for moments before, so it'll stop.
Okay, so we're going to wait just a second. Let Cindy ask her questions.
Rob, I'll go ahead and second. We can wait for Cindy to get back.
All right, so after.
Okay, so, Rob, I'm back.
Okay, Cindy, please ask a question.
So I sent these questions ahead of time to, to Crystal. I sent them earlier today. But I read the Title 1 stuff right before I read the CTE documents. And the Title 1 is so specific on percentage of goals for the new year, and the CTE Plan seems very general. And that does, it just says that we have, for example, the reference was a high, let me find the right email here. The statements were that we have high concentrator counts, and that students are completing their pathway. Those are the goals. And they're not specific. And while that may be acceptable, I'm wondering if we shouldn't have some more specific goals to have people to strive towards something as opposed to general words.
Do we have internal, internal goals that aren't necessarily on this plan?
We do. And actually, to respond to that, the section that you were referring to, I saw Crystal's email. That section was actually the part where we're doing something well in our district. There's a section in there where they let you document what you're doing really well. And then the one below that is the part where they let you document what you have identified as needs in the Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment. So that section in the, that talked about things we're doing well, it did not have a specific guideline as far as a benchmark to hit. It was just a general question of what do you see that you're doing well in the district? what do you see that you're doing well in the district? So that's where that was. But the part below that is where it was actually very, very specific. The last piece of the page was
Randy, can you tell me which document it was? Because I don't have them like all open right now. We go back to that.
Yeah, if the if you'll just pick the one on like labor market, I think it was the second one, under Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment. The very last section is where we actually write goals.
Yeah.
Dane, can you open that up for us, please?
I'm trying to find that document. I'm not sure I see it in the
Halfway down halfway down the page.
Comprehensive Need Assessment Part, which one?
It is, it says Comprehensive Needs Assessment, and it says Labor Market Alignment at the end of it. It's the second one, number two, under Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment.
Ninety four K?
Yeah.
Okay, I see that now.
It's the first part, and the way they lay it out is the first part is really an analysis of what you think your strengths are and where your weaknesses are. And then the second part is how did you find the consultation piece? So what did we do to actually, what did we go through with a Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment to find the data that we needed? So that we did surveys, interviews, focus groups, and then our leadership team did a very in-depth reflection activity. But then the next piece is what we were doing well. And there wasn't really a definitive percentage or performance indicator with that part. The performance indicators were actually in part one. And then some of the goals are at the bottom of this page. So the next section is identifying a need, and then the goals are below that. And so the goals are actually built on what we saw as a need. Like for that one, I saw that the goal was to create a process for deciding which programs to open and which ones to close based on industry feedback. A lot of that falls on our Business Advisory Council, but that was really the goal, was how do we how do we line that up? And we really need a kind of a stronger, a stronger process to actually make that a reality.
Okay, and I see hospitality and tourism is still listed in there, but I thought we were getting away from that program.
It's it's a program that's offered district wide. It's it's funny how that program is has migrated to different schools around the county. It's hospitality is a very strong program at Cox Mill. It's very strong at Concord. So and we still have some that take it at Hickory Ridge very strongly. Hospitality Tourism is there. So we still have it in the district. It's not it's not gone away.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
To board members, other questions on this? All right, hearing none, we did have a motion by Holly and a second by David to approve the Career and Technical Education application for state and federal funding. We already votes? Any further discussion? Okay, let's vote on that one. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say no. It sounds like all ayes, so that would pass seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you very much.
To our last item here is three point oh four, which is the Dell and Apple Replacement Cycle Lease. Mr. Hughes?
Yes, sir. Good evening, board members. Appreciate you having me here. Had in front of you tonight, the Dell Replacement Cycle Lease, there was a change to it in pricing from the last time we talked about this. And then there was the Apple lease that we wanted to go back and see if we could get a negotiated better price. And we were not able to at that point. So we think we have the best negotiated prices that we are able to get at this time. And we do ask for your approval.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Carpenter.
First of all, will we need to revote on the Dell since we have a different price on the Dell? Will we need to revote on that one?
Yeah, I think so.
Brian Shaw, can you give us that legal opinion?
Let me see.
Because we voted on what we had before us at that time. Now that price, that has come back differently. So that's why I was wondering if we have to revote on the correct price now.
That's what
Was it less devices or the same amount?
Chair, well, Walter, as from a financial perspective, I would much prefer that you revote on it, since the amount of devices has changed.
Okay.
Thank you.
And this is this is Brian. Yeah, I think you always want to vote on the correct, the correct amount. It would just supersede a prior vote. So, you know, I think you're fine just to vote and approve this one.
Okay.
Is that going to be one vote?
It's not like it's a situation where there's a first and a second reading required. It's just an approval.
Okay, so Dane, can you tell who the differences is are in the Dell?
Yes, sir. We came down from seventeen hundred and something Chromebooks down to fifteen sixty six. The price increase, let's see, it went from two fifty eight oh five to two, I'm sorry, it went from two twenty nine oh five to two fifty eight oh five per Chromebook.
So that's almost a school that doesn't get get their Chromebooks?
Um, it's about one hundred ninety nine, I believe, something like that. I didn't have that number in front of what the old number was.
Yeah, it's a hundred ninety nine devices difference. But Kelly, you said there were other funds if necessary?
Yes, ma'am. In the CARES Act, the budget amendment that we just approved, there was, when you combine the staff devices and the student devices, we're, you know, over a half million dollars that's available for devices. The only problem is getting in line, because everyone in the US is buying devices right now. So it's going to be hard to get them before school starts.
Dane, is there any way that we could add it on to this one by any chance?
Since this is a lease and it's paid out over four years, I think the CARES Act is one-time funding. I would not think so. That would probably be more of a Kelly question.
That's correct. You've said it perfectly, Dane.
Oh, okay. So there's no way we could just, he just added into this one so we could get the same number of, so there's no way we could do that then? Just add it on to this one? Okay.
We already have the lease documents, and I don't think that Dell or Apple would would honor that. Well, we're only talking about Dell right now. So no, the the funding will not carry over. So we wouldn't have any funds to pay it in the future years.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, sir, is somebody saying there's the intent is to buy the extra one hundred ninety nine Chromebooks using the CARES Act funding?
We absolutely have the ability to do that, yes.
Do you need anything from the board to do that?
No, we're going to do a straight purchase. And this lease required board approval. But we don't have to, we don't need board approval for the amount of money that we're going to spend for a one-time purchase.
What, is there any way we could go ahead and jump on that as soon as possible? Like so many, as as we all know, everybody's trying to get these. And the sooner we could go ahead and get this in the works, I think the better off we're going to be, because we know that everybody and his brother are going to be trying to get these. So the sooner that we can get in line to get additional equipment, I think the better off we're going to be. If we know where we we could, we have the money to possibly purchase additional computers, I think we ought to go ahead and jump in line to get them, because we know everybody's going to be trying
Sounds like Kelly's already on it, but
Yeah, yes, ma'am. Diane and I are working on that, and they'll be purchased very soon.
Okay, thank you.
And will that purchase require board action?
No, the only thing that needs to be brought to action is this lease here, for these two leases.
Correct. Well, yes, that's correct. We're going to be in our within our purchasing authority for the the future purchases that we make.
So the schools will have all the total number that we originally anticipated.
Well, I make a motion that we, first of all, approve, and I suppose approve the the Dell one with the additional cost that we, I don't know how, do I need to do the exact dollar amount? Dane, if you'll tell me what the exact dollar amount was, and I approve the Dell one first.
The Dell, the Dell amount is four hundred and eighty four thousand, two hundred and seventy nine dollars and eighteen cents.
And that is for how many devices?
It is for one thousand five hundred and sixty six Chromebooks and thirty optiplex desktops.
Okay, that's my motion.
And I'll second that.
Is that Barry?
Yes, that was Barry. Barry seconds that motion.
So we're doing the Dell lease, and we have a motion by Carolyn and a second by Barry. Any further discussion on the Dell lease? All right, ready to vote on the Dell lease?
Yes.
Everybody in favor, in favor of the purchase of the Dell lease financed at four hundred and eighty four thousand, two hundred and seventy nine dollars and eighteen cents, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say no. Okay, that motion passes. We still need a motion for the Apple devices.
I'll make the motion. We purchased, we leased the Apple devices.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion by Barry and a second by Laura. And that's to approve the Apple Replacement Cycle Lease purchase in the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and twenty four dollars and twenty cents. All right, so any further discussion on that one? Okay, with that, let's vote on that one. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed, say no. Okay, that motion passes as well, seven zero. And that was the last item we had on our action agenda. We do have a need for a closed session. I guess it's pursuant to, what does it say? Board to be in closed session to consult with an attorney, to preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute one four three dash three one eight dash eleven A three, and to consider confidential personnel matters pursuant to General Statute one four three three one eight point eleven A six. So if somebody would like to make the motion to, yes.
First of all, should I remain on this phone line or dial back in? But I will make the motion to go into closed session.
You'll need to dial back into the separate meeting?
Yeah, into closed session.
Yes.
Rob?
That's a separate thing.
Yes, Brian.
I think the motion should also add, to add student confidential student matters.
Okay, what what reference is that, Brian?
That's a General Statute one forty three, three eighteen point eleven A one. And Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act.
Okay, so we'd like to add those two to the motion.
Yes. So, Rob, I do not, I'm okay with that. As far as getting back on the line, I either need to stay on this line or have someone call me.
Okay, well, we'll figure that out. Somebody will call you.
What, does it have his number?
I do.
Oh, okay.
But do we have a link? I don't see a link for a closed session like normal.
Mindy, are you on the line?
Mindy had sent one.
I am. I sent out the link this morning, so you all should have it. It's a calendar invite.
Yes, I I have it.
I have it.
Okay, so after we approve going into closed session, we'll have to leave this meeting and go into the closed session meeting.
Okay, did we have a motion?
We had a motion by David. We did not have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Ms. Carpenter. Any further discussion before we got in closed vote on close going into closed session? All right, hearing none, let's vote. All in favor going into closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say no. Okay, that, all right. Did we get a no?
I was just teasing.
All right, so we'll say seven zero. In any event, so we're going to say good night to our listening audience, and we shall move into our closed session, board members. Let's take a five-minute recess to move, see you over there about six twenty five.
Okay.
Running.
Six twenty five. Yes.
Rob.
Go ahead.